Of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the new coaster on April 30th, 2020 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin boards, district Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department and filed with the City Clerk on May 1st, 2020. In view of the Convent 19 Public Health Emergency, the emergency orders and directives at the federal, state, and local levels, and consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 1046, as amended by PL 2020 C11, the Asbury Park Board of Education is conducting this meeting originally designated to take place at Bradley Elementary School remotely using video and/or telephone conferencing technology. The public has been advised of this venue and format change and instructions have been provided in order to access the meeting and to participate during the public comment section of the meeting. You will need to dial in, log into the remote meeting platform in order to attend the remote meeting. PL 2020 C11, which permits remote conduct of meetings, was signed into law by Governor Murphy on Friday, March 20th, 2020, effective immediately. The Board recognizes the importance of open transparency and public access and participation in its work. In view of the circumstances in the brave world in which we live, the Board asks all citizens bear with us as we work with the health, safety, welfare, and educational needs of our students, staff, and all members of the Asbury Park community. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Thank you. And could I just remind Board members that as you unmute your microphones to pause to let the system catch up with you before you make your comments? And please, if you have a question during the meeting, Board members, please, be recognized so we don't talk over each other. Mr. Grillo?
This is Joe here.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Here.
Ms. Liskinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney?
Here.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with Okay, this is our public budget hearing.
We're gonna put the budget presentation up so the Board members can view it. The presentation will also be posted to the website tomorrow morning, first thing.
Okay, so we're gonna go in and we're gonna share.
We're gonna minimize.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes?
This is Dominic Lotaraca. While we're doing that, I'm getting input from my phone that the email for the public is not working properly. The public has not been able to submit their emails.
So we have some emails. So I believe that what they're looking at, Mr. Lotaraca, is it says at the end, instead of U.S., it has U.S. prior, and that was, that's an error. So just remove prior and then use that email address.
Yeah, Mr. Lotaraca, it's Jonathan Bush. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Okay, I just, so when you look at the email address, I tried it myself, and it was confirmed to have been received by Jeff. So just in general, obviously, Mr. Hastings, the business administrator. So the word prior somehow got lumped in there, but maybe we can announce the email address real quick. I'll announce it for the public, and maybe we can even put it, just pull this up again. It's very simple. The email address for members of the public who are watching this meeting is publiccomment, one word, publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us. So publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us.
Thank you, Joe.
John, it's Joe Grillo.
Hey, Joe.
Is there any way that we can put this up on the screen or just repeat it a few times as the meeting goes on because people are calling in and people may not have heard that announcement?
Okay, so what we will do, Mr. Grillo, this is Angela Albez Anderson, and we'll ask Mr. Hastings to repeat the address multiple times throughout the meeting, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, it's Jeff Hastings. The advertisement that was in the newspaper has the correct address, and we've received
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting our 2021 budget for the Asbury Park School District. Our mission statement is the Asbury Park Schools will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. The proposed budget represents the administration and Board of Education's recommendation as the best budget to advance the school district. Our objective in the Asbury Park Schools is to provide all students with hope and opportunity. And our budget has always been guided by our moral imperative, and this is the driver behind the budget. So when the budget was originally prepared, the existing challenges for us as a school district were declining enrollment, reduction in state aid, and now our newest challenge is COVID-19. The original plan that was proposed reflects a $2 million tax levy. But the Board of Education, with the additional concerns regarding the tax increase, regarding our tax increase, I'm sorry, let me go back, let me get to the next slide. Regarding our tax increase led us to look at, go back to the drawing board and then look at ways and opportunities for us to address the reduction in the tax levy, but also ensure that we continue to provide a thorough and efficient education for our students. Therefore, tough decisions had to be made. I need to yell in that. Decisions had to be made, and in order to ensure that we balance our budget, they require additional cuts to staff in order to make up the deficiency. So I want to be clear, and I want to go on record, as a superintendent of schools, I remain vigilant and focused on ensuring that our students have what they need in order for us to continue to provide high-quality programs and instruction. It is not the position of the budget, nor does the budget reflect gutting the school district or the school system in a way that takes at this particular time where these unprecedented times where our most vulnerable students are in need of our world-class staff, support, and our programs that have helped us actualize gains. So as I've shared in the past, as I've shared in the past, the plan has four components. The four components of that plan include property, taxes, personnel, programs, and facilities. All of that together has been mentioned in the plan as a part of the larger conversation around our restructure. All of the restructure
I'm told that they can't, the audience, whoever is linked in, doesn't see the screen, the budget presentation.
No, he can't see it.
They're calling in, they don't have the video capabilities to see the presentation.
They're not on screen, they're on a call.
Right, they're on the call. And so more of what I have up there is more about pictures. I haven't gotten into the hard numbers just yet. I'm about to mention them just tangentially, and then Jeff will get into the specific details of the impact of our budget. So in the past, I've communicated the four-pronged approach where we're looking at personnel, property tax, programs, and facilities, and all of those factors have been of how this budget has been structured based on that plan. And so what you will hear tonight is referencing to those components that I just mentioned and the impact overall on the taxpayer. Again, our moral imperative is to ensure that our students that are most vulnerable during this global pandemic are provided a thorough and efficient education. And in order to do that, cuts had to be made across the board. The four areas that I mentioned all shared responsibility in having those areas cut. And so as a result of what we want to hear tonight is how we were able to balance the budget while reducing the tax levy and ensuring that we are in compliance with the state mandates. The slide that I have up now references our moral imperative, and for those of you that are on the call that cannot see it, it's simply a picture of an average home in Asbury Park. The average home median assessed value of $336,841. That is assessed, with that value, the tax increase amounts to 18 cents a day. And so I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Hastings, our business administrator, where he will talk a little bit more, and then I'll come back and make additional comments.
And I'll just mention to everybody that I got a text message. The webmaster has updated the website to reflect the appropriate link for the email address. We want to talk about the basic purpose of our school budget and school district budgeting, and we're trying to balance the educational needs and requirements of our students with the financial capability and capacity of the district. We strive to develop a budget that, one, meet the federal mandates, two, that is provided at an affordable price, and three, maybe most importantly, serves the needs of our students. Wanted to touch base on the School Funding Reform Act. We've heard a lot over the past year and at the board meetings about the adequacy budget. The adequacy budget is basically based on a formula set forth in the School Funding Reform Act and comes up with what the state determines to be the appropriate amount to run the Asbury Park school system. What they do is they take a model school, they come up with a base cost per student, they then look at elementary, middle, and high school levels and use weighting factors to increase the costs. They use special education, at-risk factors, limited English proficiencies, and also geographic cost adjustments. So what they do, a number of students in the district that meet those various criteria, multiply it by the base cost of a student, and they come up with what they feel is the appropriate amount to spend in Asbury Park to educate our students. The adequacy budget is then, once we get that total number, the state subtracts out local taxes, and then from that, they determine what's called equalization aid or the amount of state aid that they will provide to us for the school year. The local taxes are based on a combination, so they take our property tax value, and then they look at something that they call district income, and again, use weighting factors to come up with what the local tax contribution should be. So for Asbury Park, for the coming school year of '21, the adequacy budget is $45.7 million. The state has determined that local taxes should represent $21.9 million of that total budget, leaving $23.8 million as the state aid number that would be put forward to us The components are impacted based by our enrollment, our enrollment increases or decreases. They look at what they call local fair share, which again is the property value and district income, a combination of those two figures. They also look at that fair share, as they call it, and look at whether the local contribution is above or below the fair share level. They also look at our spending level currently versus what their adequacy budget says, and then they address in that adjustment aid, and that's the number that we've been talking about for several months into last year, basically about that hold harmless amount from the initial The adjustment aid was a hold harmless number that was part of the 2008 School Funding Reform. Basically insulated districts from drastic cuts when they changed from the prior formula to the School Funding Reform. In talking about the local levy and the general tax breakdown, we're looking at a contribution in the county where school taxes represent about 54% of the total general tax in the county for municipalities. If we look at our neighbor Neptune, Neptune's school budget represents, and the tax burden represents 48% of the total tax in Neptune. Long Branch Schools represent 46% of total tax. Newark, for example, 31% for schools, Keansville, 29%, Asbury Park at 27%, and Jersey City, 25, Trenton, 18, to Camden, whose tax represents 14% of the total tax for the municipality. So what does all that mean? So right now, we have a bar chart with our state aid for 2021 at $44.5 million, and our proposed local levy is $10.3 million. We compare that to what the state says the number should be based on the adequacy budget, and that compares our $44.5 million in state aid to what their determination is of 23.8. And we look at the local levy that we're proposing of $10.3 million to what the adequacy budget proposes, which is $21.9 million. So as you can see, the budgets are different, they're divergent, and what we're being pushed to through the S-2 bill is to move towards that sort of half-and-half state aid, local contribution mix. Again, the S-2 bill, which was approved back in July of 2018, looked to basically start taking back the adjustment aid from 2008 that was put in the bill. This S-2 bill basically removed that portion of the School Funding Reform Act over a number of years. We're looking at pulling back that adjustment aid, which for Asbury Park was about $25 million, and they're pulling that back a portion at a time over the course of about six years. So last year, we lost 13% of that $25 million. For 2021, we're losing 23%, and then it escalates until the school year 24, '25, when that entire portion of adjustment aid will have been taken back and redistributed throughout the state. Again, looking at our state aid history, in 2018, our state aid was about $54 million. In 2019, 53, in 2020, we're at $49 million, and for 2021, we're looking at state aid of $44 million. So over the course of those four years, including the year to come, the district will have lost $10.8 million. At the end of 2025, that number, based on the estimate, should be about $26.5 million. And as we can see over a bar graph, there's a drastic fall off of the state aid number through 2025. Looking at the current proposed budget, we're looking at three components. Basically, our operating budget, which is covering our day-to-day activities, our operating budget is $59.4 million. We're looking at a grants and entitlements portion, which is $12 million, for a total of $71.9 million as the total school budget. Now again, the operating budget is the day-to-day activity. $12 million in grants and entitlements is represented primarily by preschool education aid, which is about $8 million of that 12, and the rest is through ESA funding, through Title I, Title II, various titles there, some IDEA funding, and Perkins funding. There is no debt repayment on the books at this time, so there's no contribution from the state or locally to repay any debt. Looking at the appropriations for that $59 million, as with most school districts across the state, salaries and benefits eats up about 66% of that number, which is about $39 million. Charter school enrollment for us eats up another 15%, or about $9 million. We have out-of-district placements for our special ed and the students in need of about $4 million or 7%. Utilities is only about 1% of our budget, which leaves the 11% remaining, or about $6 million, that's to be spent on all other items, including supplies and programs and other issues like that. The district tries to be as efficient as possible in the business department, and throughout the district, we utilize various tools to maximize our efficiencies. We're looking at utility commodity bidding so that we go out and, as part of cooperative bid for commodity pricing for electric and natural gas. We're in the process of undergoing an energy savings program. So this past year, we had an energy audit done by the Board of Public Utilities, and we're continuing to move forward with those projects, and we'll be looking at projects next year that will create more energy efficiencies, and through the savings of those energy efficiencies, we'll be able to pay for those various projects. The district participates in various bids and co-ops and state contracting to get the best pricing available, requirements of purchasing through school district. Again, we participate in various competitive grants so that we can utilize funds as basically free money out there for us to address needs of students. We annually look at various subcontracting where we may be able to create savings by outsourcing particular functions. We're in the middle of a demographic study so we can get a better handle on what our student enrollment is going to look like, given the various development going on in the city, and we're also looking at ways to create more accountability for staff throughout the district. I understand that there is some feedback and some various background noise, so if we could all just make sure we're on mute, that would be appreciated so everybody can So I'll look at the tax rate for the 2021 school year and what that looks like. That's based on our ratables in town divided by the two school tax levy. So for 2019, 2020 school year, our current school year, our tax rate was 54 cents per $100 of assessed value. Increasing our taxes by $1.5 million, as Ms. Gray noted, would increase the tax rate 2 cents to 56 cents per assessed value. And again, there is no debt service, so there's no add-ons to that figure. What does that mean for the average home? So the average home value based on the tax assessments is $336,841. Based on the 54 cents, that's a school tax portion of the overall municipal bill of With the 2 increase on the same figure of $336,841, the tax would increase to $1,895, creating an increase of $65, or about $5.42 per month. We also have a chart, which will be posted again tomorrow morning with various assessed values running from $200,000 up to $700,000 and showing the current rate against the proposed rate and what the annual increases are. And so, for example, a $200,000 home assessment would create a $38 annual increase, a $400,000 home would create a $76 increase, and a $700,000 home would create a $134 increase. At this point, I'd be happy to take any questions from our board, and I thank you for your
Are there any questions from the board?
I would just have a comment. This is Dominic Lotaraca.
Okay, please, Dominic.
Just to summarize, we balanced a number of issues in this budget, as Mr. Hastings and Ms. Gray point out, a cut in state aid, a state mandate for Asbury Park as a locality to be paying more toward their schools while supporting our students so that we can continue to increase academic performance, and we're doing this all during a pandemic. So I certainly understand, people can be reasonable in saying that there should have been less cuts, there should have been more cuts, but I support this budget. I believe it's a compromise. As Ms. Gray said, we went back to the table. The administration came up with $500,000 more in cuts in light of the pain, not only the school district uh, the pain not only the school district suffers, but the community taxpayers are suffering, the children. We don't yet know the impact on the children and what we may have to do in light of a pandemic. There's a lot of unknowns. But I would just like to say, um, e- everyone can have their own opinion with regard to this budget, but I believe it is a uh, fair, adequate and supportive budget for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca. Any, is there any other board member that would like to?
Yes.
Comment?
Madam President.
Ms. Breach?
Um, yes, just a quick question, uh, Mr. Hastings, breaking it down. What's the actual percentage of increase? I know originally we looked at twenty, it was twenty two. What does that come down to now?
Well, if you're just looking at the increase of the million and a half dollars, you're going from over twenty percent down to about seventeen percent. But you know, again, you'd have to look at your individual assessments and see how that two cent increase affects your particular assessment. So I believe when we looked at the average home, it was about a three percent increase on that three hundred and thirty six thousand dol- uh, dollar number.
Thank you. Um, Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Lizinski?
Mr. Hastings, to make it easier on uh, individuals uh, that have property in town, what would be the multiplier so they know exactly what their taxes may be? Do you have one?
Sure. Just give me a second. So you could take your your uh, assessment of your home and you would multiply it by zero zero five six two six.
I just have one other uh, comment to make if I may.
You may.
Uh, I want to thank the committee administration for the hard work this week. I know it was a, you know, crunch time and it was something that was a surprise at the last meeting, so we can go back to the drawing board. And I think that it shows that uh, this board and this administration can at crunch time really cooperate and uh, I I appreciate everybody that worked hard with this to make some changes because of the impact of the COVID nineteen and the economics right now, and I think it's important.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lizinski. Anyone else?
Okay. I believe Carol Jones is on now. If uh, the administrator didn't know that, the board secretary?
Yes, I see. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
I'm just going to make a comment. This is. Yeah, this is Eric. Okay. I'm sorry, I can't hear too much. Um, I just want to um, echo what Barbara said because um, I know a lot of work went into um, trying to get this down as much as possible, so it's not a strain, as much of a strain on as many people. Um, and I just want to thank everyone for putting in the time and effort and going the extra mile, getting this down to something that we all can um, be okay with, or in my, and for me. Uh, I'm just speaking for myself for that. Um, so I want to thank everyone as well for the crunch time and the work.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, the board members that have a comment or question?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is Joe, Joe Grillo. Um, I uh, I was in these finance committee meetings and I know that it was like, you know, it 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 was really uh, difficult and tough for everybody um, to try and come up with a a budget that that reflects what's going on uh, on the ground. So um, I just, I I want to thank Angela and Sanja and the administration along with uh, the board members for uh, sticking with us and, you know, really sharpening your pencils with this. I don't think, you know, a a lot of, a lot of this stuff is not necessarily about agreement, it's about alignment. And I'm glad that the board is united and aligned towards continuing in the next coming, in the coming years to continue looking at where we can cut. And I'm sure that there's, there's, there's more that can be done in the future, but um, uh, I I can sit here and and uh, and and thank everybody for uh, for their work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Grillo. Anyone else? Carol, answer.
Just in case.
Can you hear me? No.
Yes, Carol. Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank God. Okay, I I too want to thank everybody. That was a, an amazing job you did with the budget. And I certainly appreciate it and all the, I'm sure all the people in the city appreciate the efforts that were put forth. And with a little prayer, maybe somewhere down the line, we'll get some more money to bring back some of the wonderful programs that we've had for all the kids. And I think we're going to miss them. So, but uh, thank you again and uh, great job.
Thank you, Ms. Jo- Mrs. Jones. Now it's public participation.
Yes.
And now is public participation in accordance with Board Policy zero one six seven. Mr. Hastings will read your emails into the record. Mr. Hastings.
Uh, our first is from Martin Marino. Dear Superintendent Gray and Asbury Park Board of Education members, whose email addresses I have and um, please know that personally, my husband Matt and I are big cheerleaders of City of Asbury Park, including, of course, our public schools, including educators, administrative staff, school service workers, et cetera. I'm aware of the AP BOE televised slash virtual meeting tonight at seven. I need to share with you in advance that there is a story in some local media about an eighteen percent increase in public school tax segments. Residents here in Wesley Grove condo building with approximately half of the ninety homeowners are indeed registered voters and full-time residents and are not happy.
Mrs. Gray, would you like to comment on that email? So just uh, before Mr. Hastings continues, I just want to be very clear that when we talk about the increase at eighteen percent, that's the aggregate amount. That's not individually at the amount of the increase. The increase individually will be based on your individual assessment. So as a point of clarification, individual increases are not at eighteen percent. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Hastings?
Yes, in summary from Mr. Marino, lots of hallway lobby talk about the eighteen percent school tax increase being way too high. Yes, I'm aware that WG is eleven years into a pilot and to my knowledge, none of our pilot dollars go to the AP BOE schools at this time. Will change in four plus years when fifteen year pilot ends. But guys, this forecast school tax increase is way too high. I don't know how else to say it. And I realize that Superintendent Gray has put forth a plan to deal with the loss of state aid. Her plan, of course, was well communicated. However, when the rubber hits the road and a double-digit school tax increases forecast, I think there are much deeper policy decisions to be made. Have we considered going back to the AP Education Association and negotiating a wage reduction, a wage freeze?
I would like to comment on that as well. Our salaries for our teachers' association and our administrators' association are collectively bargained. And in public schools, those are not options that we can employ. Neither are furloughs.
A significant increase in employee health benefits, monthly copays. Probably sixty to seventy percent of the AP BOE budget is salary benefits pension related. Pension costs may be fixed, but other items uh, related to staff can be addressed if there is a will to do so. If not, let me suggest the items above be done ASAP. Reason? If the anec- anecdotally wealthier homeowners at Wesley Grove aren't willing to stomach a double-digit tax increase, how can the marginally funded rest of the city homeowners actually pay it? Yes, I realize you're all working very hard to improve our schools for our students and wish to acknowledge this. But a double-digit tax increase is really a non-starter in my opinion. Please read the following excerpt from some reputable New Jersey media source from the past day or so that is floating around our building in light of the increase. Some New Jersey hospitals have already started layoffs and furloughs. Shore Medical Center, which serves Atlantic and Cape May Counties, asked its staff last month for voluntary layoffs through a spokes, though a spokesman said, no doctors or nurses would be let go. Hospital officials said they need to reduce staff and cut pay to top executives because Shore Medical lost too much money on canceled elective surgeries while also having to invest in personal protective equipment for COVID nineteen. Atlanta Care, a chain of Jersey Shore hospitals, urgent care center, is also furloughed and reduced hours for some workers and exas- and asked executives to take a twenty five percent voluntarily salary cut. Also in South Jersey, Malaka Hill, based in Spirit Health, said it has furloughed two hundred and nineteen employees. Respectfully, Marty Marino and Matt Philbin.
So just uh, again, I would like to clarify and I want to thank you. I want to start out by thanking you, Mr. Marino and your husband, because uh, throughout the course of my time here as superintendent, I have had wonderful exchanges with you and appreciate your support. I would like to uh, just for the record and set the record straight, when we talk about the increases, I'm just going to briefly summarize for you in a range what that monthly increase looks like. So on a home that has an assessed value of two hundred thousand dollars, the monthly increase is three dollars and twenty cents. So the additional tax levy that we have put in place in this budget would increase the taxes by three dollars and twenty cents a month. If a home has an assessed value at four hundred thousand dollars, that would increase your taxes by six dollars and forty cents a month. And then a home with an assessed value at seven hundred thousand dollars, that would increase your monthly taxes by eleven dollars and twenty cents a month. And I've, I feel that it bears mentioning these dollars and cents because when you hear eighteen percent and you think that you are individually paying eighteen percent, then your calculations would be much higher. So I hope this has lent some clarification to you around the impact of the increased tax levy.
Our next email is from Louis Vannas, six ten two. How much money in legal fees continues to be spent on frivolous ethics charges waged against BOE members of color?
How much money was spent? Ethics charges. How much money was spent?
I I don't understand. If that's a question?
Yes.
How much money was spent on ethics charges against board ma- I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Sure.
Legal fees, something like that.
How much money in legal fees continues to be spent on frivolous ethics charges waged against Board of Education members of color?
None from my firm. I don't know of any ethics charges filed at all.
Our next comment is from Barbara Crisack and Gail Rosewater of three oh nine Lake Avenue. Board of Education, after the last meeting of the Board of Education, we understand there have been multiple meetings where many of you have been working on modifications to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget. As of this afternoon, we have not yet seen an updated document on the website and are interested in hearing the results. We know you're in an unenviable position where if cuts are made, they are not enough for some, while others feel that no cuts should be made. We are encouraged to see you all working together to help the impact be more palatable. The concern for us is not just the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, but the years that follow as Asbury Park has no bridge, has to bridge the gap of twenty four million dollars. It is a complex problem, but the taxpayers deserve to be told the steps being taken over the long term. What progress is being made in the twenty twenty one budget towards that twenty four million dollar gap? When the process and information is not readily available, the public gets nervous. I'm sure there is a plan. If it has been communicated, please let me know where I can access it. Thank you for working together and we appreciate you representing the needs of our children as well as the taxpayers of Asbury Park. This next comment is from Kim Walker of fifteen oh one Summerfield Ave. Why are Board of Education members more focused on taxpayers than the needs of our students? Especially while our children are going through a pandemic. More should be done to make sure we take care of the children first. These children, the the children are missing a lot of education. Our next comment is from James Parham, uh, Vice Principal Thurgood Marshall. Good evening to all. Please answer the following questions. Please explain the cut and is the cut due only to budgetary constraints? Is this cut considered an abolishment of the VP positions in the school district? Have you considered the increase of COVID nineteen and restructuring disciplinary issues upon students returning to school? What is the purpose of blocking me out of virtual meetings?
Tonight's reduction, uh, tonight's uh, agenda reflects a reduction in force of all of the vice principals in the district and the reduction in force is due to budgetary constraints. There has been a lot of thought around the impact that the reduction of vice principals will have on the schools and so restructuring the district administrative team as well as um, uh, introducing, bringing back, excuse me, the position to further assist in the discipline matters of our family. And I am not aware of any block from a virtual meeting today.
I mean, I just want to clarify that, just the 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 participation piece, because this is, this is, this is like uncharted territory, right? This is your second meeting uh, since COVID, correct? Second meeting? Um, and it it, you know, as somebody who represents school boards around the state, I can tell you that um, you know, every board is doing something different. The most important thing is to to enable the board to have a public meeting, which you are certainly doing. I'm seeing lots of names here. As of right now, it looks like a hundred and twenty one people are participating in this meeting in one way or another. And the fact that um, you know, obviously you've been able to continue the public participation component, which is obviously important and and legally required um, is 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 uh, is imperative. But um, again, you're you're taking these comments until the end of this meeting. I think it's important that the board continue to hear the comments of its public, especially during a a budget hearing. And I know that you're all doing the best you can out of the circumstances.
Our next comment is from Tajanea Kamara, five seventeen Asbury Ave. How will students be affected if the tax levy is not met?
How was one? So I I'm assuming um, there's the question is around the originally proposed tax levy at two million dollars, two million dollars and now the reduction. The reduction uh, after having gone back, gone back includes additional staff cuts to make up the difference. And uh, the tax levy, the short. The difference in the tax levy, the shortage of the tax levy increase.
Your next comment is from Rashana Davis, 1308 Madison Ave. Gentrification is the cause of the declining student enrollment, not the increase of taxes. Let's talk about the impact that having people make more money has on the community. We are in this situation because of the S2 law, property values plus personal income equal local payer share. Our next comment is from Joanne Brown, 1025 Second Ave. This is not the first year of the city's taxes being increased. Why is it such a big deal when we know our kids need high-quality programs?
What?
Our next comment is Miss Maureen Nevin Duffy at 3 Deal Lake, Deal Lake Court. Uh, my question, in the process of deciding the amount of state aid the Asbury Park School District should receive, how does the state calculate properties that due to tax abatements or pilots are not paying the school portion of local taxes? Does the assessed value of those properties get included in the total assessed value of the city's properties for the purposes of calculating our need for school aid? Please explain the answer. I believe this question is about the contribution of pilots to the assessment base. My, my understanding, and this will be a question maybe for the city tax assessor. My understanding is that only the property portion of a pilot is included in our tax base. Ms. Maureen Casey, 1670 West Princeton Avenue Brick. I have been employed in the district for the past 33 years as a speech and language specialist. And I am encouraging you to support our superintendent, Mrs. Gray, by adopting the 2020, 2021 school budget and permitting the local tax. During an extremely challenging time in education, my most challenging, we all need to support each other and make sure the students of Asbury Park continue to receive the appropriate programs, staffing, materials, facilities, et cetera, to be academically and socially prepared. This is not a time for cutting back on resources when our students and families need us most. We need to come together as a strong and equipped community to provide the stability needed to be successful and progressive in these unprecedented times. Thank you.
Madam President, this is Barbara Lysinski. Is there any indication whose mic is open? There's a mic.
We can't find it. We've been searching. Call 14.
It's, it's showing us off. It's showing as muted. Okay. So I don't know how to do, I can dismiss the call.
Can you make another announcement?
Go ahead. Please, uh, everyone could just mute your microphones. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Wendy Glassman, 703 Sunset. Many questions submitted last week were not answered after they were read last week. Please provide answers to the specific questions. One, has the administration, superintendent and/or staff proposed or offered to take a reduction in salary or benefits? Specifically agreeing to zero expense in the budget for travel and entertainment, no new leases or purchases of cars, increased contribution of employees for health benefits, which would be similar to what other businesses and industries are doing in this economic crisis. If not, why not? None of these caps or reductions or contributions would in any way impair the education of our children.
Uh, just as a point of clarification, administrators, including myself, are not in receipt of any leased cars. Any of, of the automobiles that administrators or staff members drive in the district are at their personal expense. Uh, with regard to salaries, those are collectively bargained. I know this was a question from last week and Ms. Glassman, I appreciate you being interactive and reaching out to us with your concerns. Uh, however, the, um, the salaries are collectively bargained and negotiated. And so unlike private industries and perhaps governmental industries, school districts operate somewhat differently with regard to salary reduction. Any salary reductions or salary increases or non-increases, if it remains flat, that happens during the time of negotiation.
Uh, two, how much in real dollars was eliminated from the budget or caps placed on these expenses since the public comment last week and also compared to last year?
Without going into a whole line-by-line item, uh, I will say that the programs in the district have been slashed across the board 50%. So we've sliced programs in half with a reduction amounting to a little over a half a million dollars. And, uh, obviously with the personnel cuts, we've made significant reductions there, amounting to almost $3 million.
Three, where specifically, not asking for names, are the cuts to administration so badly needed and identified in the audit of the school district, both in terms of number of positions and dollars to be saved?
Over the past few years, we have been seeing an increase in our, uh, excuse me, a decrease in the administration to student ratio. In 2018, our, uh, student to admin, student, administration to student ratio was 1 to 77. The next year it was 1 to 84 and we're projecting that it will be at 1 to 25. So we are consistently reducing our administrative to student ratio. One, excuse me, one to 125. Thank you. One to 125. So we are consistently reducing our administrative to student ratio. It should be noted that we are, um, serving the most vulnerable students. Um, our students have great needs. As a matter of fact, I've crafted an op-ed piece that will be in the media very soon around, uh, the Asbury Park School District's hard work and the work around ensuring that digital inequities for Black, Brown and Hispanic children are being addressed and that that gap is being closed. I'm very fortunate that the board approved the acquisition of tablets to ensure that those most vulnerable students during a global pandemic will be able to not have access to the internet as a barrier.
Uh, four, moving students to other buildings and repurposing buildings comes with significant expense. What is the actual budget for these changes? Has an actual expense plan been shared with and reviewed by the Board Finance Committee? Why does the district need to be in the real estate business and own an administrative or operations building? Five, per student costs are unjustifiably high and out of line, even with other financially struggling buildings. Six, how much was spent by the district in ransom when the computer system was hacked and where does this expense appear in the current budget? And is it amortized or reserved somewhere in the new budget? The, the, the cyber attack on the district was covered by the insurance carrier. Uh, so it was only responsible for its deductible, uh, in that case. This is the last comment. I understand that administration agreed today to reduce the budget by only $500,000. And it believes this budget does not impose a significant burden on taxpayers. First in one respect, the tax burden is irrelevant. Focusing solely on incremental tax burden and what this year's tax increase will be fails to acknowledge the size of this budget for this year and for prior years compared to other similar districts. A rich budget has no place in this city. We have had years of that, always defense for the children. But plenty of expenses can be reduced without impairing the children's education or well-being. I believe that this administration can serve the needs of the children and the community if it lowers non-programming administrative expenses and personnel and reduces the bloat in administration and staff to make some sacrifices. In light of COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting health and economic crisis and the unprecedented loss of jobs, livelihoods and income of the city and its residents and taxpayers, this administration could have, but chose not to take the opportunity to lower the budget to a point where there been a zero tax increase to the people of the city this year, and maybe even a decrease. In ignoring that opportunity, this administration fails to serve the children when it fails to consider the burden it imposes on the families.
Okay, I would like to make a comment there. Uh, this budget reflects, as I shared, the collective responsibilities. It has been very clear that it expects two things from school budgets. One, in the cases where school districts have not been paying their fair share, tax increases. And then two, that the district is physically responsible. Tonight's budget reflects the decrease and abolishment of a significant amount, dollar amount of positions. I did not focus on the number of positions, rather I focused on the dollar amount of the positions. Teachers and staff members were directed to pivot in a day from a brick and mortar experience into a remote learning experience, something that during these unprecedented times was unthinkable. We had not put or had an infrastructure in place to provide instruction for three days, let alone over, uh, six and a half weeks for students that have not been in school. I commend the Asbury Park School District staff for being able to be resilient, to be responsive and to provide instruction for our students that are most vulnerable at these unprecedented times. I, um, am very clear, I want to be very clear in that I have and feel that this budget adequately supports the needs of those students at this time during a global pandemic. And I applaud the staff for being responsive and making sure that students in need continue to have the continuous education on food security that has been outlined and constantly messaged from our governor. And so that, that's what this budget reflects. At a time where the future is very unclear and we don't know what these uncharted waters looks like, to further, to, to make further cuts that do not put the responsibility across all of those four areas that are mentioned would be unfair, irresponsible and not in alignment with our moral imperative. And our moral imperative is to ensure that our students are college or career-ready upon leaving us.
Our next comment is from Jesse Bay Ricks, 1202 Fourth Avenue. I'm a 50-plus resident of Asbury Park. My concern over the past few years is seeing the student population decrease Central Office administrative staff and building administrators continue to increase. In your attempt to balance the budget, each year you start from the bottom, cutting those with the smallest paychecks. It's the community people who will lose their jobs. This budget can be decreased by starting with the top-heavy administration whose commute to work at the expense of laying off our qualified locals. My question is, with a student population less than 1,900, why so many administration supervisors and directors? Will you start balancing your budget by getting rid of the excess weight at the top? That's where the money is. We must always put our students first. I would love for my question to be answered, not just read for the record.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ricks. I appreciate you taking the time to not only be on the call, but to also provide us with a comment. Um, I haven't, we haven't had an opportunity to actually delve deeply into the personnel items of the agenda. However, um, what you will see and note is that there have been a significant number of administrative positions that have been abolished. And so to your point and a large part of review that I undertook when I reviewed, uh, the budget and areas for potential savings and salaries, I did not think it would be prudent to take, uh, positions from the bottom where you would have to get two or three, when I could, you know, look at administrative, uh, salaries in a different way and try to balance the budget there. And so what you will see is a reflection of not just cuts from typically the bottom, which the Teachers Association has experienced the brunt of cuts for several years, as you have pointed out. But you will now see in this budget, there are administrative cuts as well. And those cuts are amounting to over a million dollars.
Our next comment is from John Napolitani, Asbury Park Education Association President, 8 Old Weathersfield Road, Ocean. Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, Madam Superintendent and members of the public. As president of the Asbury Park Education Association, I have worked in conjunction with Central Office for many years, dealing with a myriad of issues, both good and bad. Over the past four years, my association has seen drastic cuts through budget constraints, reductions in state aid, reductions in students, and the board basically kicking the can down the road by not raising the Asbury Park. Over the past four years, my association membership alone has gone from 470 down to approximately 380 staff members. And that's from an all-time high of 625 back in 2005. This year, more retirements will occur and those positions will also be lost. Finally, the board is putting forth school tax increases to the city as the school tax currently only accounts for 24% of the entire city of Asbury Park budget. School tax is 54%. I applaud the board for finally getting in line with neighboring towns. As members of the Asbury Park School Board of Education, you absolutely should be voting yes on this budget. Although some staff may be eliminated due to the repurposing of Barack Obama Elementary School, the superintendent did a great job in the creative repositioning of staff without decimating the Asbury Park Education Association membership. This is from Sean Hamilton, 84 Creek Road, Keansburg. I have been employed by the Asbury Park School District for 21 years. As a classroom teacher ranging from kindergarten through my present fourth grade math position. I have two questions. Given the current circumstances, wouldn't it be wise in the short term to keep the Barack Obama School open for the upcoming school year? It would help our students tremendously maintain social distancing. Their safety is our top priority. Looking at the long-term plan for Asbury Schools, why did the powers that be ignore the state audit recommendations for the district to utilize existing district-owned buildings for the Central Office, maintenance, et cetera? While this transition would cost money in the short term, the long-term savings would be astounding. The rent alone on the Central Office is $250,000 a year. Barack Obama School is Wi-Fi ready. This seems like a common sense solution to a very real problem. This is Deborah Lorenz, 200 DeWitt Avenue. My son Jason currently attends the Bradley Elementary School and is in a self-contained special ed classroom. I hope in light of our current world crisis, the board will approve the current budget as is. This will reduce the number of teachers that we will lose if and when Obama School closes. I do, however, believe it would be advantageous to keep the building open for one more year and reduce our class sizes in anticipation of continued need for social distancing. I can see from the proposed budget that funds have been the E S Y. As we do not know what the future holds and our population of special needs students benefit from the continuation of services, no matter how minute, online or off, I would like to ask that part of the budget, that part of the budget to also be kept as is. is. This is from John Feinstein. What spending adjustments have been made to reduce the budget? What is the balance of uncollected property taxes contributes to the budget shortfall? So, the school district is current with their collection of taxes from the city. So, there is no shortfall in terms of collection of taxes at this point. Our next comment is from Ms. Felicia Simmons. As a board member, your job is to write policy and to hire and fire the superintendent. The state monitor was partially right. You cannot run the day-to-day operation. But you set the tone of the district. You control with policy where money is allocated, by the way of policy procedures and regulations set by you. The elected Board of Ed members are the voice of the children and community. You are tasked to do no harm ever, cut every part of the budget, should honor the children and community. You have a job to do. Our next comment is from Ernest McNolly, 400 Deal Lake Drive. With A P P D investigations open on city council members, gun incidents, riots at Asbury Park High School, principal of Asbury Park High School suspended, investigation of city officials allegedly hitting a student with a clipboard, and investigators open about Asbury Hotel Recreation Committee event on 2/23/20 with taxpayer money for events for children, not alcohol-lavished food. Children present political electioneering-paying DJ P P D officer via secondary checks from family, mayor, council, and school board members and others, and conduct of unbecoming violations of sunshine laws and conflict with Asbury Hotel iStar people in developers' applications for unpopular buildings, i.e. the pool at the North End. Board member, A P P D breach involved in fundraising involving school-city officials for questionable reasons and money distribution. Further staffing at A P schools is estimated 400. Student population falling drastically. Violence and poor performance of schools based on inadequate teaching and administration to serve students. Stop blaming students and parents. Conflicts at Asbury Park, Inc. have gotten worse between schools, police, fire, government, mayor, council, city lawyer, and city manager. Out of accountability, planning, zoning, construction, fire marshal departments, city manager, and others. Word bookstore, criminal charges. Catholic priest, pedophile partner. Federal charges. Just to... All of this and more, and COVID-19 pandemic, ruination of Asbury Park City funds and school tax participation, should postpone this 2021 budget voting. Teachers may need to be furloughed, school buildings closed, administrators let go against taxpayer demands. Don't vote now, postpone for face-to-face public participation.
Obviously, if I could just step in, unfortunately, by law, fortunately or unfortunately, by law, we're prohibited from moving on this beyond today. The deadline the state has given is today, May 7th, and there has been no change. The state has relaxed a lot of deadlines, known, well-regarded deadlines. They have not made any movement or any relaxation of the deadline for today. The budget must be voted on tonight, or then you lose some of your control over it.
Our next email is from Maria Varga, 1100 Fourth Avenue. I'm an Asbury Park resident and would like to comment on the school budget. I think we all agree that we would like the children of A P to have a quality education, but it can't be at the expense of the taxpayers. I've lived here for 20-plus years and have seen A P transformed into what it is today. I love this town and love all it has to offer. I would like to remain here. They have to find another way to come up with the money needed. Why can't they consolidate the schools? Also consolidate administration. This is what has to be done, especially during this pandemic. Our next is from Alicia Mohammed. Hello, my name is Alicia. I'm a resident of Asbury, and my children are in the district. I was wondering why the board can't find a different building to be in to help the budget instead of letting all those wonderful employees go? Because the amount of mill, because the amount of money the board is paying to be in that building is a lot. Ms. Nina Summerlin, 1101 Bangs Avenue. With over $1 million being spent in administration with having no children contact, how much will the cut in the area of administration be? We're not taking pollings. Mr. Keith Barry, 1308 Madison Ave. Want to cut so many jobs when they don't have to? You talk about the taxpayer, but what about the taxpayers whose job you just cut? And that concludes our comments at 8:20.
But now, I will now close public participation.
I would just like to go on record. Obviously, I won't go into the response for each question I was asked, but it does bear mentioning that as we prepare for a future that is unclear and uncertain, our class sizes, because I heard some of that as a recurring theme and question, our class sizes and pre-K are mandated by code and statute. Excuse me, so those classes will be capped at 15. The rest of our classes currently will not exceed 18 students. If we receive guidance from our governor regarding social distancing or any of those other concerns, we have adequate space in our facilities to be in compliance with that. But at this particular point, we're not looking to max out our class sizes, but we also have increased our class sizes from where they have been previously in the past. As it relates to special ed, that's all mandated by code, and so we will always be in compliance with the code.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And now we have a revised 2019-2020 school calendar.
So, before we make a motion and move on some of the items that are up next, could we all, again, remember that our mics are muted? So you'll need to unmute your mic, pause for a minute, and then please identify yourself as you make a motion or second a motion. Thank you.
Yes, please. What is it, Ms. Lizinski?
I wanted, I wanted to know if we're going to go an executive session in regards to the personnel agenda, the agenda to this...
We just wanted to get through the calendar first, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
The calendar that's on the agenda tonight reflects the fact that we did not use the three inclement weather days that are embedded in the calendar. Additionally, our board, I mean, our staff worked through the spring break, and I want to commend them again for being so thoughtful in providing continuous instruction and ensuring that our food and secure families were secure during this global pandemic. So consequently, the revised calendar reflects the three days as well as at the end of the year, five days of using the spring break that the staff worked through.
Board members, could I have a motion in a second for A2, number seven, the revised school calendar?
I can't, I can't hear anything right now. There's caller 13 that's...
It was moved by Ms. Etienne. I need a second. And I'm second, second, second. Okay, Mr., any questions? Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'll get it, give me a second. Hold on, Ms. Jones. You're at the bottom.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Say it again, Ms. Jones.
Mrs. Jones, say yes or no.
We'll go to Ms. Lizinski while we wait for Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes or no, thumbs up or down?
The motion carries.
I don't know if you don't want to go, stay here, and I can text you.
How do they know that? Because I can't see it.
Somebody's mic is open again.
Yeah, I'm going to try to mitigate that. It's just hard because you guys see they're muted, but I don't see them.
I need you to go to seat one, two. Should I read it?
We just need a motion for items one and two on C1, which is the adoption of the budget.
I'll move it, Lizinski.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Lizinski and second by Ms. Etienne.
Question?
I have one, Ms. Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Lizinski?
Is there any, is there any adjustment to the numbers here, or is it as it is written? Because I know there was some adjustments as early as today.
So paragraph five, the tax levy has been reduced. And in paragraph nine, the tax levy has been reduced. So your number should reflect in both of those areas, $10,399,447.
Any other questions? Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne? Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
She's indicated yes. Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Saunders?
Thumbs up or down?
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders Anderson?
Yes.
Budget carries.
Okay, so we need to do so into... So, board members, you've been emailed a link for executive session. Please check your email. And we can transition into executive session.
We need a motion to go on the closed.
Okay.
So, C1 on the bottom.
I need, I need to go into executive session.
Can we just, Ms. Anderson, can we just, can we just explain the reasons for going into close? What are the reasons we're going into closed? Discuss personnel matters, okay?
So, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Please identify yourself when you move for a second.
This is Joe. I'm seconding it.
Thank you. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters, may and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on this date, May 7, 2020, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes or purpose as outlined and described below, which is personnel matters, upon return, action may be taken. We're going to be approximately 15 minutes, 10 minutes?
Right.
10 minutes.
So those listening on the call, the meeting is not going to be terminated. We're going to pause and mute, and then we'll be back in approximately 10 minutes. I need a roll call. Ms. Lizinski? That's a yes, Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Pink?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
He giving you a thumbs up?
Thumbs up, thank you. Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. It will be about 10 to 15 minutes.
All right, here we go, we're back.
Okay, what am I supposed to say here?
Are you ready?
Yeah, we're ready. So we're ready back in?
Looks like we are.
Let's just check.
There's Carol, there's Dominic.
I'm here.
Joe's here, so it looks like everybody's here. Okay, we got five, we can roll.
We also have time.
Mr. Hastings, would you please take a roll call, take roll, and then we can open the meeting.
Okay, we're going to open the meeting. Ms. Etienne?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
I'm here.
Ms. Jones? Thank you. Mr. LaRocca?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Mister Pinkney?
Here.
Mister Saunders? Thank you. Miss Breach?
Here.
And Miss Saunders?
Okay, Madam Superintendent, we would like to ask.
Yes, uh, I'm requesting a consent agenda for items on B one through B two.
Okay. I need a motion, please. Okay, I have a, a motion. I need a second, please.
This is Joe, I'm seconding.
Any questions? Okay, Mister Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Etienne? Miss Saunders Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Jones, your vote, please.
She's saying yes.
Mister LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Upstain.
Mister Pinkney?
Yes.
Mister Saunders? Mister Saunders?
Yeah, he's giving you a thumbs.
Thumbs up, thank you. Miss Breach?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Okay, good, thank you. I need a motion to adjourn?
Move.
All right, a second, I second it, all in favor. To all ladies, Happy Mother's Day. Thank you very much, everyone.
Stay healthy. Stay healthy. Happy Mother's Day.
Pardon me? I didn't hear you, Jonathan.
I just said, I said, stay healthy and Happy Mother's Day.
Oh, yes, thank you so much and give our best to your wife.
I will. Take care. Bye, everyone.
Thank you, public, thank you for participating and we'll see you at the end of the month for our next board meeting. Good night.
Good night and Happy Mother's Day.
Yes, to you too, dear. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, Happy Mother's Day.
Yeah, thanks, Tony, you too.
Oh, by the way, I tested po, I tested negative, so I'm going back to work tomorrow.
All right.